I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, we call our roll calls. I hear my break, please.
Counselperson Josh Hart.
Counselperson Brett Fire.
Mayor Jimmy John King.
Counselperson Craig Anderson.
Counselperson Jeremiah Logan.
And we're going to start this out before we get into the business meat part of this with an award, another financial excellence award. Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. The Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting has been awarded to the city of Stewartville by the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada, GFOA, comprehensive annual, Forest Comprehensive Annual Financial Reporting. The Certificate of Achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting. And its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by the government and its management. An award of financial reporting achievement has been awarded to the individuals or department designated by the government as primarily responsible for preparing the award-winning CAFR. The CFAR has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, which include demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure to clearly communicate its financial story. So all of our citizens know that we do have full disclosure of all of our financials. I've been here 12 years. I've given this award to Barbara Newbauer, but she could not be here tonight. Every year for 12 years so far. So for 2018, once again, we were awarded the certificate. I'm sure we'll be awarded it again. We just get buttons now because the wall got so covered with the words. It did, I was there, obviously, it'd be buttons now. I'm sure in 2019 with our new financial department, we're going to be awarded it again. I have full confidence in that. But this one, once again, was because of our finance, I believe you and I would finance that here.
I bet you had a lot to do with it.
But Barbara Newbauer was our finance director for years and years and years. And one of her last achievements again before retirement was another award for the city of Stewartville for great financial bookkeeping and full disclosure to all of our citizens of everything about the city. So I wish Barbara could have been here. She can't. Craig will probably have to accept his award on her behalf because he's been such a big part of the finance for several years. Hey, I can't handle my own finance. We go ahead and do a picture later?
Yeah, I'll have to beat him.
So once again, thank Barbara and thank you to the new department. It was helping to their time too. So, let's move on to approval of tonight's agenda.
I'll make that motion.
You have a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Any additions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Approval of council meeting minutes of June 9th, 2020.
I'll make that motion.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that also carries. It takes us to accounts payable. We have the listing with the additional listing there. If we have any questions, direct them to finance director Carl over there.
I just had a question. What do we, for dust control, there's a pretty big expense. Where we, yeah, Free Bar County Co-op says dust control. Where do we do a dust control at?
On all the spray.
Yeah.
Chloride.
Chloride spray on the roads.
Partner with I-Force Township to get a better volume rate. And then all of our parts in the gravel areas. And then a section of 15. And then, I think, a little section over by In the Bear Cave that we share with Township. So it's all the chlorine, is what we call it for that section.
Does that include the alleyways too?
Um, just like out to the compost site.
Okay.
And I don't think, unless we would get some special request.
Any other questions? If not, we'll look for motion approved.
Motion approved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that also carries. That'll take us reading the motions of general business. And the first thing in their general business tonight is People's Cooperative Energy. And they're going to speak about their five-year rate class. Mike?
Good.
Would you like to come up?
Would you like me to stand?
Up for podium, please, everybody.
You want me to do it here in motion, or here, or where?
At the podium so you can have the mic.
Okay.
The mic for Mike.
Make for Mike. Okay. Well, I'd like to thank Bill and Jimmy John and the council for letting me speak tonight about our rate change we have coming up. I do appreciate the opportunity. You guys are the first city that I've spoken to about our rate change. Due to the COVID, we've been limited to where we've been doing FaceTime with different organizations. So now that we're starting to open up, so I do appreciate the opportunity. So we are planning, is there a clicker here?
No, I'm your clicker.
You are the clicker?
I am.
Okay. So I'll just give you the nod. Do I have a secret? Okay. Well, I think most of you, if not all of you, are members of the Electric Co-op, People's Energy. And as, if you are members, you read our newsletter, I'm hoping. You go to our website regularly. You go to our Facebook page. Gwen and Heather handle all of our communications, so hats off to them for a great job for all the communications you do in all of our avenues. And if you look at our communication pieces, you know that, you've probably seen our mission many times, that we are here to serve our member owners by providing reliable electricity, superior customer service, and innovative energy solutions at fair and reasonable prices. Now, I should have bolded that at the end because we're talking about the rate change today. But our goal is that we're a nonprofit, so we make just enough margin to keep us running. We're kind of almost like a city. We just keep our rates as low as we can to our membership and have just enough to reinvest in the infrastructure and have the resources we need to provide reliable electricity. So we're a 501(c)(12), which really means nothing other than the fact that 501(c) designates a nonprofit. And therefore, we are in it for our members, and that's the only people we serve. So just to give you a little overview, we have about 24,500 accounts in our entire system. And Stewartville makes up about 12% of that. So you guys are a big chunk of who we are. And you became a larger chunk of People's Energy when we did an acquisition of the Alliant territory in 2015. So five years ago. We're at the five-year mark here. And at that time, we added those cities mainly, and we combined our efforts to buy the territory of Alliant Energy in Southern Minnesota. We combined our efforts with 11 other co-ops to get the deal done because Alliant wanted to get out of Minnesota. And so we, they wanted one point of contact, so we created Southern Minnesota Energy Cooperative, which was a combination of all those co-ops to do the deal, essentially. So once the deal was done, we divided all the territories back out to all the different co-ops you can see listed there. So our membership, after the acquisition, SMEC up there, we call it. So we have legacy and SMEC members. Legacy members are members who have been with us forever. And the new ones are the SMEC members. 29% of our membership is SMEC members. We grew by 50% in one day, as far as membership goes, in 2015. So here's a little further breakdown of how Stewartville breaks out. We have SMEC members, the residential SMEC members make up the largest portion of our membership for Stewartville, at 2,200. And we have 205 commercial and industrial, that's the CNI up there, commercial and industrial accounts. So of the membership, 84% of the Stewartville membership is SMEC members and 16% are legacy members that have been with us forever. So the Alliant acquisition, at that time when we acquired that territory, the Public Utilities Commission, at that time governed the Alliant territory. They were a public utility. And we are not governed by the Public Utilities Commission, co-ops are not. We are governed by our own Board of Directors. That's where it stops. And so when we did the acquisition, the Public Utilities Commission wanted to protect the membership or protect their consumers by saying we couldn't jack up their rates right away. We couldn't do crazy things with them for about five years. Actually, three years. And then in years four and five, they would allow us to raise rates to members if we did a cost of service study. And cost of service studies are very lengthy. They're very costly. And we did go through a cost of service study and they allowed us a 1% increase in 2018. So our SMEC membership got a 1%, so we had 0% for the first three years, no increase. 1% in 2018, and then we didn't do another cost of service study for the next year, so we got nothing in 19. So for the first five years, we've, we've had the SMEC members, we've given them a 1% increase. So the last increase that those same members, when they were with Alliant, last increase they had was in 2011. So really, they've seen a 1% increase since 2011. So on August 1st of this year is when we go out of PUC control, essentially. So we are just back to being the co-op again with no governing body except for our Board of Directors. No oversight, no agency oversight of any kind. And our Board of Directors has been planning a long time for, we do 10-year financial forecast to see, just as the city probably does, to know where, how much you can reinvest and how much margins you need to keep your operation running. And we determined a long time ago that we would need to, there was a large rate disparity between our legacy members and our SMEC members. And our goal, and I use this, this graphic, it doesn't go all the way back to 2015, but the disparity was about the same. So you can see the difference. This is an all-in rate, cents per kilowatt hour, which you guys probably don't relate to. But on your bill, you have a basic service charge and you have an energy charge. And if you combine the total cost of your bill and divide it by the kilowatt hours, that is what you see up there. So the legacy members in the dark blue for 2020, you can see pay 14.3 cents as an all-in rate. And the SMEC members pay 11.9 cents. So there's a fairly large disparity there. And there's two different power suppliers for each of those seven members as well. We're just a distribution cooperative. We don't generate power. We buy the power from somewhere else. So the disparity, there is a disparity between our power costs as well. And the SMEC members happen to have a higher power cost. So if you think, if they have lower rates and a higher power cost, we have very little margin that comes from the SMEC members and a greater margin that comes from the legacy members. So the contribution to our operations is very, very minimal when it comes to the SMEC members. So, long story short is, our goal is to merge the rates, get the low SMEC rates back up to the legacy rates for equity among members. So we have two moving parts during our, in 2020 here, during our five-year rate strategy. We're in year two of our rate strategy, which I will get to in the next slide, I think. But we're doing a couple things here. One is, we're recovering our fixed costs and a fixed charge. We're moving toward that. That's a movement in the industry as energy sales generally decrease, as people are doing things more efficiently. You know, more energy-efficient appliances, energy-efficient light bulbs, that kind of thing. Our energy sales are actually declining on an average, on a per-account basis. And we have a lot of fixed costs. We, our only variable cost is the cost of energy that we buy. And that varies by how much the members use. The rest is typically fixed costs. I mean, we don't, we don't hire and fire employees on a monthly or even an annual basis in order to adjust our cost. We, we have, we know what it takes to manage the system and manage it well, to maintain the system. So everything really goes into the fixed cost bucket except for the power supply that we give to our members. So our goal is to fix, if you go back one slide. Our goal is to put our fixed costs in the fixed charge. And on your bill, you have the basic service charge, you have an energy charge. The goal is to get, over the next couple of years, is to get all the fixed costs recovered in the basic service charge. That means the flat monthly charge is going to go up for everyone. And that maintains stability for the cooperative and allows us to obviously be financially stable in a period where in a trend of declining sales. And that's a trend that's all, most utilities are doing. A lot of co-ops who have low density, we cover a lot of miles with very few members. That's, that is a trend that most co-ops are doing for financial stability. And then the second part is the rate merge process. For the SMEC members in 2020, there will be a 14% increase for those members. And the legacy members will see a slight decrease. So you'll see a change in the basic service charge and then increases and decreases to certain groups of members. Okay, you can move on. So this is the five-year rate restructuring plan that our board approved. It's a little bit granular, but if you just look at year two up there, we're shifting the fixed cost into the basic service charge. And then on the SMEC members, we're, it's the first step to align the rates with comparable legacy rates. So it's a first step to try to get those rates to merge. So we can move on to the next slide. So when we do, when we change rates, we take a lot of things into consideration. Rate making is art, not a science. So we, we consider the member in everything that we do. We exist because of our members. We exist for our members. So you can see that up here, most of this is affecting our members. We want member acceptance. We want to promote efficient use. We want continuity between rates is where we're headed with our rate change. We want them fair and equitable, is another point that I want to point out. So we don't do the rate changes in a vacuum, is my point. So if you can go to the next slide. This is very granular, and you really won't get a whole lot out of this. I think that's in your brochure. But the main point I want to make is the basic service charge, the third column there. It's going up $8 for the legacy members. It's going from 37 to 45. But in the same breath, we're reducing the energy charge, which is on the far right over there. And we'll show you how that plays out on some rates later on. So on the legacy AU, that's the urban rate. So that is more dense territories in town, so to speak. Those, most people in town have the AU rate. And there, rates are going up $1 on the basic service charge, but their energy charge is going down. And then the SMEC folks are getting an increase in both the basic service charge and the energy charge. Okay? So this is really how it plays out. Legacy residential rates, it's 46% of our total membership. And the 10% there is the kilowatt hours, the average kilowatt hours per month that those folks use. So if you just look on the far right, their average monthly bill for the legacy members will go up about $1.68. Okay? So that's how it all plays out. And the AU rate, which is the urban rate, which is about 8.7% of our entire membership, those folks use about 750 kilowatt hours a month. Their bill on average is going to go down $4.26 every month. And the SMEC rate, 160, which is the Alliant-acquired members, is 25% of our total membership. That group uses 700 kilowatt hours per month, and on average, their bills are going to go up about $10 a month. So how would your membership know if they are a SMEC or a legacy member? Because they don't talk that way. They don't think that way. You guys probably don't even think that way when you look at your bill. So we've color-coded the bills for simplicity for our members, so that when we're doing these rate communications, they know that if they have a blue header on top of their bill, they, they are a SMEC member. And then they can relate to it in the brochure and all the materials that we have when we talk about SMEC members. So, and legacy is obviously green, so you can move on. So my first year as the CEO, I get to introduce the rate change, even though it's been in the works for five years. So right away, I'm the bad guy. But I'm the finance, I was the finance guy before this, so I'm the guy that helped put a lot of these rates in place, so I was very familiar with it. And so then COVID shows up. So then we go, wow, we're given a rate increase we planned for many years for this group. And this is, we were thinking, this is really rough. So the board moved, we were planning August 1st for this rate change. We moved it back one month. I know it doesn't sound like a lot, but August is a very heavy usage month for electricity. So a lot of members would see a very steep increase in August versus moving it back to September. So we moved it back one month. Also, to help our members, we retire in capital credits. So that's the equity that, the owner equity that we return annually to our members. Our board approves that annually. And we, it's either a bill credit or it's cash back to members. However, we do it both ways. If you get a lot of money back, we'll cut you a check. If you're getting, you know, less than $100, we'll, we'll give you a bill credit. But anyway, we're giving back a million bucks to members. We're doing that early. We normally do that in October. We're doing that in July this year. And then we haven't disconnected any members for non-payment. Usually, we end up doing about 40 of those a month. We haven't done any of those for three months. And no late fees for any members who are paying late. And our board approves that month by month. And we haven't, we're at a board meeting next month, and I'm recommending that we still continue not disconnecting and no late fees. So that was our changes we've done for the, for the COVID. So you can go to our website and read about the rate change and the five-year rate restructuring plan. We've also done a video. You'll see me as a talking head and with some slides interjected, some of the same slides you saw today. Heather and Gwen did a great job putting that video and the script and everything together. All I had to do was read it. So it's very informative. It's about 11 minutes long. I think it's 11. Is it 11 minutes, Gwen? 11 minutes or something? Yeah. So you can go out there and listen to that. Is there another slide here? That's, that's about it. So I'm just here tonight to make sure that the city and the leaders are informed about what is coming with the rate change. Answer any questions you have. And, you know, our members are your citizens, so we're all in this game together. And we're hoping to arm you with the materials that you need to, to talk to the rate changes someone inquires about it. But by all means, direct them to the co-op. Direct them straight to me if you want. Gladly answer any questions. Any questions of the group here?
Anybody got any questions for Mike? Brett, you have any questions? Bill?
Just comments. Just so you all know, the staff of People's Energy is very accessible. We work with one quite a bit throughout the year on different things. But in the past with Elaine and now with Mike, you actually get them when you call, so we appreciate that. And then our public works does have a lot of interaction with their field staff. And the foremen's that they've had throughout the years have been very workable. We try to trade things if we can, help each other, whether it's an equipment kind of borrow or a little bit of a labor borrow when it, when it's necessary or it makes sense to both sides. And they've always been cooperative for that, and that ultimately goes back to our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. You guys are great to work with.
Anybody got any other questions or any comments? I signed a check for our monthly bills, so we won't have to delay being honest.
Perfect. Thank you, thank you.
All right. Thank you for coming down and presenting this, because this will come in handy when we start seeing our new bills.
Yeah. Send them our way. We'll answer their questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot. And you're welcome to stay for the audit. Anyone who wants to can sit.
Only if we don't have them, right?
In one place or another, it's going to increase. And that's next on our general business. If you want to go, Mike and Glenn, it's virtually fine. Whether anybody wants to leave, except for Andrew, you're standing. Thanks for coming down.
Thanks, everybody.
Next, we're going to hear from Smith Schaefer Associates, a 2019 audit report. Andrew, Megan, I take us down here.
Correct.
Andrew, turn over here to you now.
All right. Thanks for having me tonight. Tonight, we will walk through the financial statements for the year ended December 31st, 2019. We are engaged to perform the audit and perform, or prepare the GFOA Comprehensive Annual Financial Statement. Tonight, you do not have to worry. We're not going to walk through the audit in detail. We did sit down with members of the Finance and Audit Committee last, or a couple weeks ago, to go through that in detail. So we did sit down with city members and management and went through that in detail. So starting on the second page, there is the unmodified opinion from Smith Schaefer. It's independent from the city. Our opinion is a clean, unmodified opinion, which provides reasonable, not absolute assurance that our financials are free from a material misstatement. It is reasonable, not absolute. We take a risk-based approach and make selection based off of perceived risk. With that said, we do make selections and trace back to supporting documentation. Everything that we requested was able to be provided to us in a timely fashion, which is very helpful for us in being able to get the audit down efficiently. Also, in that audit book is the Minnesota legal compliance, which is required by the state. We have no exceptions noted in any of our testing. That test includes conflict of interest, collateral, making sure public indebtedness laws are adhered to, any contracting and bid laws, and claims of disbursements. No issues in anything that we tested in that. As I mentioned, we did sit down with the Finance Committee and members of city management on June 9th. We went through the audit in detail. We walked through the letter, the internal control letter, just the segregation duties. It's the same finding that we've had in the past, just the limited number of people in the office. It's not fiscally responsible for the city to go and try and properly segregate all that duty. With that said, we're not saying you don't have any internal controls. You guys do have controls. They're just not always going to be enough to get that comment away from the financial statement. And then we just go through the respondents to the findings from the GFOA, which we did respond to. And they'll be submitted when we do submit this financial statement to the GFOA for 2019. There is no single audit required. That was if there's any federal grant dollars that were more than 750,000 that was not reached in 2019. And then, as we mentioned at the beginning of the council meeting, the city received the GFOA Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting for the last 12 years. And we will once again apply for that in 2019. Just briefly, the governmental funds, the city's funds that they have, so this is going to be everything. All the city funds except for the utility funds. So you have the general fund, special, six special revenue funds, debt service funds, three different types of debt service funds, and then the capital project funds. So if you're looking up there and saying, we have a lot more funds than that, the city capital project funds is made up of about 23 funds. And the special assessment bond funds has about nine funds in it. So in total, the city has about just over 45 funds that it has to maintain. Naturally, look at tax capacity, just to kind of get how the city is growing and what is happening with the city in the current economic state. So the total tax capacity for 2019 was 4,610,000, up about 350,000 from 2018. So the city is growing and the value of the homes are increasing. We've had consistent growth the last five years. They're up over $1 million in the last five years in the home, in the tax capacity. Next, we'll just look at the property taxes collected. So total property tax collection were 3,370,000. This represents about 57% of the total governmental funds collected. When I say governmental funds, it's going to be everything, all revenue coming in excluding the utilities. So not the water, sewer, stormwater. It's about 57%. The levy was increased, 3,298,000. So with the mobile home taxes, we did collect about 72,000 more than our actual levy was in 2019. than our actual levy was, uh, in twenty nineteen. Next, we look at your tax increment. Um, so there's one active district, that's the Halcon District, um, collected about thirty-five thousand in revenues. Uh, most of that is paid back to the, um, developer as the pay-as-you-go district works. Um, next, we go look at your local government aid or your LGA. Um, so this is the other main funding source that's coming in for the city. Uh, this represents about sixteen percent of the total governmental revenues coming in at about nine hundred and fifty-two thousand, um, up about three thousand from the prior year. So, it's, it was pretty flat from twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen. We received about a fifty-two thousand dollar bump in twenty, from twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. And then some good news, in twenty twenty, that is expected to go up to a million, uh, twenty-four thousand. So, we should get about seventy-two thousand more in LGA in twenty twenty. Um, this chart just shows the different governmental revenues that we talked about on the major categories. Um, so you can see that that gap is widening, that funding source between LGA, that far-right, uh, grouping, and the second to the right, the property taxes. Um, just the property taxes had to increase with increasing costs as everything is costing more. Um, the state has not been kicking in their share, uh, recently, um, so the cities had to increase those property taxes to make up for those increasing costs. Um, the charges for service in the middle there have remained relatively flat. Uh, most of that consisted of the pool revenue and some, uh, fire contracts coming in, any rentals. Uh, it's been relatively consistent there for the ten years shown. Uh, next, we'll jump into the governmental expenditures. So, on the first one is the general government in, uh, there. Um, so this is salaries, benefits, professional service, supplies, telephone, insurance, uh, related to general government, or the office employees up here. Total expenditures are just under five hundred and eighty-three thousand, up, uh, twenty thousand from the prior year, um, or three and a half percent, so relatively consistent. Um, general government expenditures equals nineteen percent of the total governmental expenditures, um, that's excluding any capital outlay or debt service. Um, so that was a pretty consistent, that was eighteen percent last year. Um, our expenditure were relatively flat, uh, but we did have a little increase in here, uh, just based on when projects are getting complete. Um, the increase was to some employee wages, and then there was some supply cost, um, just with the, uh, three different people throughout the year quoting expenditures. Um, we did have some, just maybe some different allocations, but that should get more consistent as we, uh, continue to go through. Uh, the next slide then is the public safety. Um, so the operating in the darker green, and then we try to separate out any capital outlay in the yellow up on top. Um, so this is going to be your law enforcement, fire protection, street lighting, and, uh, transit, uh, from prior years in twenty fourteen, we got rid of that. Uh, but there is numbers previous to that, so transit is still included. Also, including this is the, um, solid waste disposal in there. Um, so the total, uh, nine hundred and fifty-two thousand, um, up in total about fifty-six thousand, um, but most of that, uh, about forty thousand of that is related to operating. Um, we saw some higher, um, costs, as we'll look in more detail in each of those sections. Um, but that makes up about thirty-one percent of the total governmental expenditures. Um, there wasn't a whole lot for capital outlay in twenty nineteen, we purchased some radios and turnout gear, um, for the fire department. Uh, public safety, so as I mentioned, these are just the main categories that make up that previous slide. So, law enforcement contracts, five hundred and fifty thousand, up fourteen thousand in the prior year. Um, fire protection and first responders, uh, two hundred and eighty-nine thousand. Um, that was up about twenty-three thousand. Um, with the first responders and fire protection, though, uh, they had total revenues coming in of about, uh, two hundred and seventy thousand. Um, so we did use about nineteen thousand of the reserves coming in. Um, and then the twenty nineteen fire protection, those revenues were, uh, property taxes of about a hundred and one thousand, township contracts about eighty-nine thousand, um, some state fire aid of fifty-nine thousand, and there's some other smaller miscellaneous revenues coming in of training reimbursements. And then street lighting's the last one there, about eighty-three thousand, that's up thirteen thousand, as I think Carla went through in a little more detail and make sure all those are getting, um, allocated correctly to the street lighting, since she, uh, took over that role. Public Works is our next slide. Um, so this is going to be the salaries and benefits, improvements, the parking lots, uh, fuel and supplies for Public Works. Um, so this is down a hundred thousand in twenty nineteen. Uh, I am going to mention this is, snow hauling is included in this one. Um, so a decrease of a hundred thousand. Um, most of that decrease is due to the prior year repairs of the Mack truck, and then there's about sixty-two thousand spent on the prior year in seal coating that was not done in twenty nineteen. Um, it represents about thirteen percent of the total expenditures, excluding, uh, capital outlay and debt service. Library on slide fourteen, um, so some salaries and benefits, stockpile contract, supplies. Um, so once again, the operating is in the green and any capital outlays in the, uh, purple color up on top or blue. Um, so the total operating expenses were up only about three thousand. Uh, total, uh, expenses were up about ten thousand, um, if you can include the capital outlay in there. Um, so the capital outlay in twenty nineteen were the books, and then we also did some landscaping and some key computer and technology upgrades in the library. Um, spent about three hundred and thirty thousand, including capital outlay in the year. Um, and this is funded primarily through property taxes of two hundred and ninety-one thousand and the county contribution of about fifty-three thousand. Recreation, um, operating expenditures were, uh, flat, up about eleven hundred dollars from the prior year. Um, so civic center, swimming pool, summer programs, adult softball grounds and parks. Um, so your operating's remain relatively flat. Um, the yellow up on top, there was some money spent on a carport for capital outlay and the fence. Um, so pretty consistent in your operations in the recreation department. Um, just a little further breakdown in the park and rec, um, so the park brings in, uh, operating revenues in the blue are going to be on each of those categories, and then expenditures in the red. Um, and then if there's any capital outlay in the green up on top. So, you can see the park, uh, brings in about, uh, twenty-two hundred dollars in, uh, charges, um, through various rentals and that. Um, the expenditures of about three hundred and fourteen thousand. Uh, the pool brings in revenue of a hundred and ninety-four thousand. Um, our operating expenditures were up a little bit this year, up about two hundred, or up to two hundred and twenty-five thousand, and we spent a little bit of capital there, um, on the fence and the pool. Um, so the pool, uh, ran a deficit of about, uh, forty thousand for the twenty nineteen year. Then the adult softball brings in about sixty-two hundred, and has about fifty-two hundred of its expenses. Economic development on slide seventeen, um, so spent a hundred and eighty-three thousand in twenty nineteen, down, uh, two hundred thousand from the prior year. Uh, the prior year had three, uh, new revolving loans that were, um, issued. Uh, there is no revolving loans in twenty nineteen. Uh, the majority of those expenditures were about sixty-two thousand for the professional service recita. Uh, spent about seventy-seven hundred dollars in tax abatements, and then thirty-three hundred dollars on that pay-as-you-go TIF. And then there's also some grants for, uh, beautification of about thirty-one thousand that the city gave out in twenty nineteen. Um, so just briefly looking at all the different categories we, uh, talked about, just showing that the public safety is the largest expense, expenditure for the city, um, as it has been for the many years, and then recreation and general government, um, and then public works, uh, just based on when the seal coating is done. Next, we'll look at your general fund budget to actual. So, the budget in the first column, the blue color, uh, actual in the red, um, maroon color. So, in total, the general fund was under budget about a hundred and sixty-five thousand in twenty nineteen. Uh, most of that was, uh, due to the Public Works, that department came in under budget about a hundred and seventy-five thousand. Um, the other general government, public safety, uh, were slightly over, um, about nine thousand in the general government. Public safety was over about twenty-one hundred related to those streetlight allocations, and then, uh, recreation, um, was actually under budget, a hundred and sixty-five dollars, so I think that's about the closest you guys have ever been on budgeting recreation there. Um, so, on a budget of a little over five hundred and seventy thousand, you got it within a hundred and sixty-five dollars, so that's pretty good. Um, and then our revenues in total, uh, were also over budget, about ten thousand, so the city did about a hundred and seventy-five thousand better than, uh, projected budget, and added about two hundred and seventy-nine thousand to the reserves. The other, uh, funds that have, uh, budget schedules that are presented, um, all of them were under budget except for the volunteer, uh, fire and first responders, they're over about twenty-three thousand. Uh, most of that was related to the salaries and supply, uh, categories. Uh, if we move on to the general fund reserves then, um, we have the unassigned and committed fund balance in the gold color, which totaled about one point six million, almost one point seven million in twenty nineteen, that was up two hundred and seventy-five thousand from the prior year. And then our total expenditures are in the blue, um, they're down about forty thousand, but, uh, almost two point three million in total expenditures. Um, one com- metric that cities use to, uh, determine the health of their fund balance or their reserves is if you take the expenditures and divide it by your unassigned and committed fund balance, you get a, kind of an estimate of how much, uh, reserve you have, percentage you have on hand. Uh, you're at seventy-four percent this year, so we did increase that about fifteen percent this year, just with adding to the reserves and, uh, uh, keeping those expenditures relatively flat. Uh, library fund balance, um, so at the bottom there is going to be the trust, uh, the Brin Trust and the Helleb Trust in the blue, and then the assigned or committed, uh, in the gold there, so you can see that that has grown the last, uh, five years, added about sixty-three thousand to the unassigned balances the last, uh, five years. We added about twenty thousand in twenty nineteen. Um, total property taxes revenues of the two hundred and ninety-one thousand come in to fund the library. Um, and then they have a fund balance at year end of about two hundred and sixteen thousand set aside for the library. Uh, civic center fund, um, so this fund increased by about ten thousand in twenty nineteen, up to about fifty-four thousand. Um, revenues from property taxes, uh, just under sixty thousand, and then charges for service, which is going to be any rentals, uh, just under twelve thousand. Um, and then our expenditures were down about thirty-six thousand as we completed the floor replacement in the civic center in the prior year. And then we'll, we're paying on that rough assessment over the next few years as that is being assessed to the civic center. Uh, the fire and first responders fund, um, so the fund balance decreased about eighteen thousand as they're a little bit over budget in their, uh, expenditures. Um, additional purchase of the operating supplies, the rescue rope bags and anchors. Um, so the big change was from twenty sixteen to twenty seventeen, when they transferred two hundred and ninety-three, or two hundred and thirty-nine thousand out of the, uh, fire fund and into a fire capital fund, um, which we'll look at here as it is included in the capital project funds. So, the fire has about seventy-one thousand set aside in fund balance there. There is no debt outstanding on any of the equipment at this time. Uh, revolving loan fund, um, up about nineteen thousand from the prior year, uh, has a revolving loans outstanding of a hundred and eighty-two thousand. Uh, there is no new loans issued in twenty nineteen, and at year end, there's about two hundred and sixty-seven thousand in cash that are available for, uh, future loans in this program. Economic development fund, um, property tax collections of about fifty-five thousand in twenty nineteen. Um, used, uh, some of our reserves, about sixty thousand in the, of reserves in twenty nineteen, um, as they did, uh, pay some property taxes on land that was acquired for the Rochester Medical Building there. That's what this fund paid for. Capital projects funds, so the capital projects fund, as I mentioned, is, uh, twenty-three separate funds. Uh, they have about two point, almost two point four million, uh, in fund balance at year end. Um, there was a new bond issued in twenty nineteen to help fund the twenty nineteen street project, about three hundred and twenty-seven thousand went towards this into the capital project funds. Um, the major capital expenditures were a new John Deere wheel loader, a new plow truck, the bike pass, and the completion of the twenty eighteen and nineteen street projects. Uh, briefly, just talk about the debt service. So, um, the city has some bonds outstanding. The twenty-two thousand nine bond has about twenty thousand left on it. Uh, that will be paid off in twenty twenty, I believe. It's already paid off as it was due in February. Um, the twenty-ten has got two hundred and thirty-five thousand left on it, and that's paid off in twenty twenty-one. Um, but just kind of, you can read through there on the different amounts, but just kind of interesting, the two, the city's outstanding indebtedness in twenty nineteen is very similar to what it has been in twenty-ten. Um, so over ten years, um, you kept that debt at about relatively flat level, which is, uh, good since you guys are maintaining your roles and keeping up on your projects, so you're not deferring the maintenance. Uh, general obligation bonds, the twenty-twelve, uh, swimming pool, um, all bonds are timed, or all payments are being made timely in both the swimming pool and the fire station bonds. Um, the swimming pool's paid off in twenty twenty-six, and the fire station's paid off in twenty thirty-three, um, so those are still, uh, always, as those are getting paid through, uh, property taxes through the reference. Uh, general obligation utility revenues, so these are supported by the water and sewer revenues. Um, so we did issue that twenty nineteen A, uh, portion did go to the water and sewer, um, as all those payments are being made timely. Um, this, this water and sewer did not have debt outstanding for the prior years from twenty, uh, I believe twenty-eleven to twenty sixteen, uh, there was no debt outstanding. Um, small debt amounts, though, relatively to the cash balance and the amount of size that is going through these funds. Um, thirty-three is the nursing home, um, so this has total, um, bonds of just over a million outstanding. Uh, this is supported by lease, uh, payments from the Stewartville Nursing Home, um, that's paid off in twenty twenty-six. Five-year debt service, so this is just taking your principal and interest payments for the next five years. Um, so just under one point two million in twenty twenty, and just over one point two uh, million in the following year with no, uh, additional debt payments, as we would add those. But then it would drop as those bond payments are starting to be paid off in future years. Next slide is the net pension liability. Um, so this is always my favorite one to try and explain, um, but we do give that information because we do report it. Um, so this is related to the para, and the city participates in para, uh, which is a multi-employer pension plan that is underfunded. Everybody that participates in that plan that contributes in has to record their share of their underfunding. It is actually determined by the state, uh, they have a separate audit firm that comes in and does that. We take their numbers and adjust to it. Um, so they're, in twenty nineteen, the total liability outstanding is about seven hundred and ninety thousand. It's not really a liability you can go and pay off, it's just a liability that's going to be out there, it's an underfunding. Um, it is determined, uh, accurately determined, uh, we do report on it, just as it is in your financial statement. With that said, it's opposite with the net pension assets, so with the fire relief, um, they have a net pension asset of about six hundred and twenty-two thousand, um, as they have total assets about two, little over two million, and the liabilities is the one point three, almost one point four. Um, once again, this is accurately determined, and we adjust to those numbers that are provided to us. Uh, moving on to the utilities, we'll start with the water fund, uh, thirty-eight. Um, so the revenues are going to be in the green, our operating expenses in the red, non-operating income or expense in the purple, and then any net income before transfers. Um, so revenues increased from twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, just under six thousand or a little over a half percent. Expenses, though, were the big decrease of almost a hundred thousand. Salaries were down about thirty thousand as we had a change, um, in that position, and then there was also some fuel tanks and, uh, pump maintenance in twenty eighteen that we did not have in twenty nineteen. Um, so, before, uh, transfers out, uh, the water fund added about four hundred and twenty-four thousand, uh, to net, net income, and then this water fund transferred forty thousand to the general fund as a payment in lieu of taxes in twenty nineteen. The water fund, so then we look at the cash and bonds outstanding, so the cash in the green, they have a little over three point two million in cash at year end, bonds outstanding at five hundred and eleven thousand. Um, so that cash has continued to grow, um, the last ten years, as they have a healthy balance there of about over three point two million, um, in that. The sewer fund, um, once again, there's no rate change in the sewer fund. Uh, sewer revenue decreased as we had some SAC charges and one-time charges in twenty eighteen that were not in twenty nineteen, about twelve thousand. Um, sewer expenses increased, though, about a hundred and eight thousand, um, compared to twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. But of that hundred and eight thousand, eighty thousand is depreciation, so that's a non-cash expense. Um, then the other major was there was a sludge blower, some maintenance on that, uh, was also made up some of that increase. So, the net income before transfers of two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, uh, down a little bit from the prior year with those increase in the expenses, uh, but then they also did transfer forty thousand in payment in lieu into the general fund. Um, slide, uh, forty-one there, we have the sewer fund cash in blue, and then the bonds payable in the red. Um, so, we see the cash grew, you know, the healthy, about, uh, almost five hundred thousand in from twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen. Um, we did take out a small portion of the bond, uh, that's about one point two million, uh, in bonds outstanding, and almost the same in cash. And then we just look at the stormwater fund, um, their cash at year end, a little over seven hundred thousand, as that grew, um, almost a hundred and ten thousand throughout the year. And the last slide then, we just have a quick, uh, summary. The general fund unassigned committed fund balance of, uh, one million, six hundred and seventy-one thousand represents about seventy-four percent of twenty nineteen expenditures. The general tax levy generated fifty-seven percent, and, uh, LGA contributed sixteen percent of governmental revenue, as the city's of governmental revenue, as the city's become more reliant on the citizens and less reliant on the state, just with the unknown of what the state's going to do with that funding. Fire department has reserves of about seventy-one thousand and no equipment debt outstanding. They also have a separate included in the capital projects funds of about five hundred and twenty-three thousand for fire equipment. In the capital fund, revolving loan fund has a hundred and eighty-two thousand outstanding loans and about two hundred and sixty-seven thousand available for cash. City's capital project funds has the two point three million in cap, fund reserves, that's including the fire capital, so excluding that, that's about one point eight million for other capital improvements. Total debt outstanding increased to six point eight million as we issued a new bond in twenty nineteen. The water, sewer, and storm water funds are generating sufficient cash flow to fund capital needs, service, debt, and build reserves for future infrastructure. Then we'll just do the brief mention of the para there, and then I just want to thank the city for maintaining accurate city records and having all the supporting documentation. It's a pleasure to work with the city. City management is very helpful and kept everything well organized this year, and we appreciate everything that they do for us. Any questions?
Any questions for Andrew? Finance committee, Andrew?
Thank you for your help.
Thank you. Bill?
Just a special thank you to them this year. Obviously, we went through a very sudden personnel change right at the beginning of the year, and so Andrew and his staff helped out immensely as we got things back on track and got things hopefully in a good orderly way so that we could finish it out. But they basically spurred a moment phone call or a couple visits, worked out great, and we did work together really well, and as you can see, I'm going to report once again, so thank you. And thank you to council for working with us and being patient with all of us this past year.
I'd like to thank, I'd like to thank the staff itself, the administration, our finance, the whole works, this city, the twelve years I've been here, there's been nothing that grows, the tank capacity has grown by millions every year because of the great work our staff does, and the spirit of full disclosure of all financials to people. This city continues to get awards, like Andrew said, we will continue to get them. I want people to know that, I want them to know that. Andrew and independent auditors like that, who stand up in the back of a city like Sturgis with the full disclosure, no matter what you read, is a big deal. It's very important, and we have it here. I'd like to thank Bill, Carla, Cheryl, who'll sum into, and our finance committee for making it such an open and easy process for everyone, if they want to take the time to come down and look instead of just sit at home and write letters. So thank you all for that, and thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
That takes us to a COVID-nineteen preparedness plan approval. Under Executive Order twenty-seventy-four, released by Governor Tim Walz on June fifth, critical sector businesses, including government entities like cities, are now required to adopt the COVID-nineteen preparedness plan. The commissioners of the Minnesota Departments of Health, Employment, Economic Development, D and Labor and Industry have been directed to provide additional industry guidance for critical businesses. Attached, will you please review the COVID-nineteen preparedness plan for the city of Sturgis, which has been put together by our staff, the paperwork is in there. I'm going to ask council if they have any questions or anything else they'd like to know about it, be directed towards Bill or staff. Otherwise, we'll be looking for an approval of this plan as submitted.
Is this, excuse me, is this similar to what other cities are doing, like our size?
The legislature actually authorized all cities and counties to be required to do it. And so what we do a lot of times is compare notes with other cities. In our case, we tried to look at cities our size and a couple of head, or bigger couple or, to come up with what we think is customized for our needs.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, plan is submitted, do we have a second?
A second.
Do we have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, but have a carry. That takes us to Mayor's Staff Consulting Report. Tonight, the city of Sturgis would like to send their sympathy to the families of Carol Darling, Bob Bachan, Benny Burhout, Urban Ask, Norris Ace, and Dave McConnell. And we'd like to also send out a big congratulations to Lucian and Carol Cole, celebrating their fifty-fifth play anniversary. Congratulations to that. I just want to send a big special thank you and shout out to the Chamber of Commerce, Glenn Murner, and the whole board. Years old, their biggest challenge ever faced was moving things from Florence Park to Bearcane Park to try and get this all worked together, and the enthusiasm that they showed in planning a new venue, and they were getting excited, they heard ideas during the winter planning sessions, it looked like it was going to really, really be something, and then COVID came along. I don't think anyone in this community could wrap their heads around not having a summer fest, I mean, it's been here forever. Lucky for us, we have administrators Wayne Raynor, Ross and Bernard Walter, while with the board consisting of Nick Johnson, Mike Brady, Jared Johnson, Josh Buckmeyer, Dave Hildebrandt, Robert Hersch, Ed Gruder, Lisa Nelson, Megan Romans, and Dylan Smallwood. And they have put their heads together and spent a lot of time and effort, and they've come up with a one heck of an event. It may be different than what we're used to, but they made sure that Sturgis will still be proud to have a summer fest. I want to thank all of you for stepping up and doing that, it'd be an honor to participate with you. I hope everyone does enjoy the Fourth of July this year, the ways that they've worked it out, and the ways that we hope to camp with your friends and family. Don't forget, we're going to have the fireworks, we're going to have a mini parade, and they've got a lot of other things thought up, so thank you, Chamber, very much. That's all I've got for tonight. Bill, city administrator's report?
Yeah, Department of Transit bracket, obviously my biggest paragraph was going to deal with potential federal funding, but our own state legislature has not come to any agreement on it. About one point eight billion is supposed to be coming to Minnesota, and it's up to the governor and the two houses to legislate some guidelines on getting cities, counties, things reimbursed. Well, no decision yet because of the lawless opportunity to get reimbursed for some of the protective measures that we took, or some of the programs we had available for our businesses. So we'll wait and see what happens, hopefully some still will come through on that, and then the city can be reimbursed for the cost we had, and then some of the programs we've offered, which is a benefit to our businesses all have. We are going to unfortunately have some follow-up news that we'll have to work with you on, on this tree control situation. We do have one of the properties that isn't compliant with the directives on the ladder, so we're going to bring that back to you because it calls for actual tree removal, not trimming, and so some of that saga.
That's on the dangerous trees.
Correct, yeah. So that's just a heads up. Then, good news, we're happy to use, I know we said we try to give you updates, and thanks to Lexi back there, the staff down at the pool, we did a handout for you just to show you how the first week went, and I got to go to Cheryl yesterday, and she said, really? Everything went fairly smoothly. Obviously, a few folks, you know, had questions about why no family passes this year, or why the split shifts, but Cheryl indicated that once the explanations were given, people understood that this is an unusual year, but by far, the response has been they're thankful to all of you for letting us open up the pool and take advantage of it, and you can start seeing the numbers, and hopefully as the summer goes by and we get some good hot humid days that'll continue, and if the guidelines get lifted a little bit more with less restrictions, we'll try to adjust accordingly and get things opened up a little bit more too. But all the categories didn't look too bad, and so I'll just say so far so good. And then, I can do it now, say, Shawn's time, project seems to be going really well. We had some on the CIP project, with the rains last week, we had a garbage truck and a couple folks softened up in some spots, but we've tried to give everyone a heads up about that, on the streets that are torn up, but otherwise, really no complaints at all, and the contractor has kept going with a good schedule, and so we're getting great cooperation from the neighborhood, and so hopefully we'll keep going with that.
When does, like, they start burying power lines and stuff? Are they doing that right along with the sewer, or how's that work?
Some of that actually won't take place till next year.
Okay.
So the utilities is the tough thing to work out, because we're actually, you know, Minigap or Min Energy started a new program several years ago where they're putting two lines down every street, so you don't ever have to cross over if there's issues. So we're working with them, People's Energy, first time we're really experimenting with them on doing that underground, and so I think just about all the, what, three?
I think there's.
Five?
Four.
Four easements came in, they think they can work around the ones that haven't yet, but it's to try to work it out together, so what they can get in this year, they will, but otherwise, there will be work that has to still come back next year, depending on the sequence of how each utility gets put in, but so far so good on everything.
Like on the date, because they have so many working days this year, it's changed, right? Are they like ahead of schedule at Menol?
Yeah, I'll update it today, we would have had it, but we had a different meeting, so we'll try to get that for you.
Just curious.
I know they haven't voiced any concerns, so I think they feel good, and they're ready at, if or when needed, throw in an extra crew maybe to help, so great cooperation from that board.
Any other questions for Bill? All right, thanks, Bill. Finance Director Carla, you got a report?
Just a heads up, we may try to do another finance meeting before the next council meeting, just maybe probably about thirty minutes of your time, so I'll try to do it right before, and I'll get that out to you. Just want to go through some stuff that I've been looking at within the bonds and paying off, and just looking ahead, because I'm starting to look ahead towards the twenty-twenty-one budget and starting to put some of that stuff together, and just some different, maybe ways to, you know, simplify or not have as many expenses come in knowing that our tax base may be different and our taxpayers may, you know, may not have the same amount of funds available.
Any questions, Carla? All right, thank you. Thanks for another good audit. Public Works, Shawn's not here, but his report is in there, if there's any questions on the report, if Bill can handle them.
Yep, we're continuing on with Ample Theater Project, and we'll start some joint work, as I pointed out in my report, with the Dairy Queen, because they were working on purchasing that former little Minigap area, and they've agreed to help us with the start of that trail connection, and then it will help them maybe with some fill, which ultimately we would have to do anyway, but we'll start getting some of the base work done, then we'll do an eventual connection, and then once all that's done and settled, then we'll come back, and of course, we'd be responsible for the blacktopping of it at some point in time. But that'll be a project as we go, and so great cooperation there. And then we have started the work on the pond that's going to complement or beat along side of the lucknel improvements that they've had to do with the town patio project, and how we can better facilitate a bigger drainage regional area, and so we're just getting all that information put together, and that'll be forthcoming as well.
Any word on the pond, at all, from the pond out there?
The good news was, the insurance company looks like they'll cover a brand-new replacement, and.
Is that with a deductible or no?
So, we do have a, that's a five hundred dollar one. But the total estimated cost we actually found in the archives, the.
Yeah, it was in, from twenty fifteen, and then I sent a note out, an email out to the company we got it from, asking for what the equivalent would be to replace it. So I haven't heard anything back from them, but hopefully we'll see what it is.
No leads from the Sheriff's Department?
Not that I've been communicating if they've got any, so.
Any questions on Shawn's report? Tell the guys thanks. Wastewater report is in there, if you have any questions on that, I'm sure Bill knows something about that. City Engineer, no report tonight, unless you left some information with you?
Uh, no, we didn't get in touch basically with the construction.
Library Director, no report tonight, did he leave any?
No, doesn't leave any.
Fire Chief report?
Excuse me, we are going to try to have a meeting on the West Development, and at our workshop this spring, you guys indicated you all wanted to be involved in that, so we're going to try to do this, like the second, third week of July, so I'll be, next week, I'll send you out some, a question here on what, what won't work for you guys, so we can try to schedule something with them.
That's so we can get together with the City Engineer?
And with the developers.
Fire Chief's report? Fire Chief, but I'll report, I saw the new ladder, or the new used ladder trucking down here last week, last, what, the other night?
Last Friday, I believe.
See that from Casey's window?
No, I saw it from High School Park, no, I saw.
We're doing some of my math, guys.
Trying to get my GED finished up.
Shout out to Steve.
Committee Commissioners Board Report. Chamber of Commerce, they've got the big E newsletter with a lot of the stuff going on for the Fourth in there, you can check it out, they're going to have food trucks around town, they're going to have a lot of stuff going on, parades, fireworks, so check it out. Spend some time on the Fourth around town. EDA, HRA?
Had a meeting last week, came out with a new COVID relief program, or businesses can qualify for, I think it's two hundred dollars, to buy supplies they need to get back in the business?
Just get online and do it, how's that going, Carla, you getting any?
I don't know if Joyce had anything come in, but.
I think she's gotten three.
Three? All right. Finance Committee?
We're going to be meeting in two weeks.
Thanks for, thanks for the hard work too, you guys.
I'm on vacation from the twenty-fifth, that's why.
Library?
Nothing.
Park Board?
Oh, we met last week.
Anything special you want to report on, or?
Um, not right now.
Okay. Personnel?
Sounds like you probably have something to report on that.
Not just yet. Personnel, nothing right now. Finance Home?
Today's meeting.
Change in July.
All right. Public Safety?
They're out looking for fun.
Yeah.
Public Works?
Nothing.
Ready?
We did have a strategy meeting today, where Ready met with us five ring cities, Byron, Chatfield, Pine Island, and ourselves, to talk about future relationships and what can go good or what we should.
Did you know that was your role?
Yeah, yeah.
You were in on that?
Yeah.
Joy or not, did?
Uh, just the city administrators for this round. Ready's working on a bigger plan for that.
Roll call?
Uh, no report, meeting tomorrow.
You got minutes of May twenty-seventh in fact, okay. Stu, one eighty, coming back on board.
Ready, Lexi, and right now, it looks like my last name, last name, last name might be the end of July or beginning of August.
Okay.
So, see how the train goes.
See if you got a good student, thank you for all the effort you put in too, for teaching her too. Transit Advisory Committee?
Uh, no report at this time.
No communication tonight, takes a token mic. Council welcomes and encourages participation of community members. Please keep in mind that the comments must be pertinent to city business and must adhere to the data privacy rules. That means no employees' name may be used. Please do not expect to ask from the council this evening regarding your concerns. We'd also request that your comments be limited to four minutes, speakers be recognized only once. At this time, we ask anyone who would like to address the city council, please step up to the podium, state your name and your address. No one wants to use the old mic, we'll go to the final motion of the evening, a motion to adjourn. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? We are adjourned.